Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, May 23rd, 2022 edition of the Oceanside Planning Commission. If I could get everybody to rise and have Commissioner Simons lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Planner, can you do a roll call, please?
Chairman Rosales.
President.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Custer.
Here.
And Commissioner Simons.
Here.
Let the record show that all six members are present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Communications on matters not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any slips to speak from anybody? City Planner? Clerk?
It looks like we have maybe two slips. Mary Cee is going to read out the requests to speak.
Great.
We've got a John, pardon my enunciation here, Botorf, and also a Diane Dwaynei. And if you'll come in that order, you'll each have three minutes.
Please come forward if your name was called.
Hello. Good evening. My name is John Botorf with forkids.org. My comment was for Agenda Item Number Six about the General Plan. It is very important to update the zoning for industrial.
Excuse me. I'm going to interrupt you. This is for items not on tonight's agenda. If you want to speak to Item Six.
I signed up for the Item Six.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll wait till.
We'll wait for Number Six. Yeah. Great. Thank you. Anybody? Sorry, we have one more slip? No more slips? Okay. Great. Then we will go to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes from our last meeting, May 9th. Any discussion? Any comments or move for approval?
I would move to approve the minutes. Last.
We have a motion approval of the minutes from May 9th from Commissioner Balma.
Second motion.
Second from Vice Chair Morrissey. We'll go ahead and vote unless there's discussion. Discussion. Everybody have a chance to vote on that? There we go. Thank you.
Chairman Rosales, let the record show the minutes are approved, 6-0.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Consent Calendar. We don't have any items listed. The Agenda Item, or excuse me, the Agenda after that is Transportation Items, also no items listed, so we'll go to Public Hearings, which follows that. We have two items tonight. Item Four is Consideration of a Regular Coastal Permit, which allows for the construction of a single-family home located at 1229 South Pacific Street. The applicant in this case is Brett and Dawn Anderson. We'll start with disclosures. I'll start with mine. Staff report. Drive by this location, and I believe that's it. Commissioner Custer?
Staff report and Google Maps.
Thank you. Commissioner Simons?
Staff report.
Vice Chair Morrissey?
Read the staff report. Familiar with the site?
Great, thank you. Commissioner Balma?
Staff report and Google.
Thank you. And Commissioner Dodds?
Staff report.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Greenbauer. How are you?
Good evening, Chair Rosales, members of the Planning Commission. Richard Greenbauer with the Planning Division here to present. I've got the two projects tonight for public hearing, and so I'll make them brief. They're both very simple projects. The first one being a regular coastal permit. This project site has been before this body. It was within the staff report back in 2018. Subsequent to the approvals, the applicant went through the appeal period, and upon no appeals being filed with the Coastal Commission, demoed the site and put it into erosion control, what it stands today. So when your drive-by, Charlie knows there are all the erosion control there, but the buildings were devoid of the area. So with that, the property was sold. New applicant, the Andersons, had purchased the property and just wanted a single-family residence in lieu of three condo units that were previously proposed there. There's the synopsis that I just articulated to you, showing the existing, or the building that was previously approved in 2018, three-unit condominium, 5,000 square feet with three-car Now before you tonight is a much, not much, but about 1,000 square feet reduced project with approximately two stories over basement. You can see the fronting left portion of the image that shows the two stories off Pacific Street, and then it layer cakes down to the string line on the beachside to the west. There's an overview of the site, further articulating, showing the location and the erosion control that's in place since the buildings have been demolished on-site. The zoning for the site is residential tourist. We apply the R1 standards for single-family residents, and that's the consistency factor that I placed within the staff report tonight. I presented you with the development standards, a brief overview showing that they're in conformance with, or they've utilized the block face average for the front yard setback, and it is consistent with the previous approval and will be less impacted by providing less units on that site. The applicant has brought forward a very coastal contemporary-style, modern design using smooth plaster finishes, horizontal siding along the Pacific Street. You'll see standing seam metal roof sheds or shed roofs, and then a exit that goes immediately onto a rooftop deck for the single-family residence. Other types of superior architectural design that they've used is copper flashing, downspouts, scuppers, that'll patina over time with the marine air and provide with a nice fixture covering there. Furthermore, there's stone accents on the beach and street front, just so helps break up all the massing of this single-family residence. With that, staff has reviewed the project for consistency with the zoning ordinance. As I previously articulated in the R1 standards, it is consistent and consistent with Policy A for land use by bringing forward a design that improves on the visual image of the site and the surrounding area through architectural form treatments and materials. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission confirm issuance of a categorical exemption for an infill development and approve the project by adopting the attached resolution. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Richard. Any questions for staff? Don't see any at this time. Call you back if we do have some. Do we have the applicant in with us today, and do they want to do presentation?
Chairman Rosales, we do have the applicant as well as their design team in attendance. They've articulated to me that they're available for any questions, and they have no presentation at this time unless that has changed. Okay, that's correct.
Great, thank you. It is a public hearing, so if there are slips submitted, or if not, if the audience would like to speak on this item, now is your time. Do we have any slips? We don't have any slips expressing interest to speak on this item. How about those in the audience? Anybody want to come forward? Okay. I don't see anybody rushing forward, so we will close the public hearing and bring it back for consideration or any questions.
I'll just make a comment first. I was on the commission when we approved, I think it was a three condominium project. This is so much more exceptional than what was previously approved. I think Kathleen Baker did a great job. I'm sure the owners themselves influenced on the design. It was great layout, great design. I love your choice of materials. I'm very much in support of your project.
Thank you. Commissioner Balma? Any other comments or questions? Okay. I think we're.
I'll make a motion that we recommend that we approve this project. We conform to the issuance of a CEQA Guidelines Article 19, Section 15, 332, and approve regular coastal permit, R.C. 2111, by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2022 P11 with findings and conditions of approval attached herein.
Great, thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chair Morrissey. Second, anybody?
I would gladly second it and wish them the best of luck on their construction.
Thank you. Second by Commissioner Balma. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Chairman Rosales, let the record show, vote 6-0 unanimous in favor of the project.
If they were all so easy, I think that took us five minutes. Thank you, and good luck with your project. Glazing along to the next item, and that would be Agenda Item Number Five, which is also a public hearing. Item Five is Consideration of Development Plan and Conditional Use Permit to Allow the Construction of Approximately 700-square-foot addition to an existing car wash tunnel located at 1501 North Melrose Drive. It's the Shell Car Wash. The applicant is K.A. Enterprises, represented by Eugene Marini. So we'll start with disclosures. I think the only disclosure I have is staff report and attachments, and that's it. Commissioner Dodds?
Staff reporting.
Commissioner Balma?
Staff report and very familiar with the site.
Great, thank you. And Vice Chair Morrissey?
Staff report.
Commissioner Simons?
Staff report.
And Commissioner Custer?
Staff report, Google Maps, and very familiar with the site.
Terrific. Mr. Greenbauer, you're back for Item Five?
Chairman Rosales, members of the Planning Commission. For the second item, I'll try to be a little quicker on this one because it is just a modification to.
Yeah, please.
To an existing facility, the Shell gas station on the southwest corner of Oceanside Boulevard in Melrose. And with that, I tried to place a condition in there to keep the gas prices lowered, but I was told by the city attorney's office that we can't bring forward such a condition, so I'll just focus on the car wash itself. And with that, I've got an overview showing the general commercial zone in general plan designated site that I just articulated, circled in red. You can see we do have the newer Melrose Plus Oceanside residential development that's occurring to the north on the east and west side of Melrose, and then we have an entitlement that's in process across the way. You can see it's an urbanized area, and we have a lot of multifamily, especially in the cities of Vista, that have broke ground and are fully developed in that area. So with this project, staff did go forward. I know we've had issues in the past with, you know, vacuums and car wash and noise issues, so we did reach out and have an analysis, acoustical analysis formulated and brought forward. We did review that in the conclusions, and there are no impacts to the surrounding area or the potential residents that will be coming forward in the near future. With that, I provided an image showing the construction of the addition to the existing automated drive-through car washes, just to make them more marketable with, as you see, it seems like car washes are popping up everywhere these days. So in order to keep up with the market trends, they're updating their facilities. The blue sections are showing the additions that'll occur to the existing building. As I go through those, if you have any questions, I'm available. We have the architect here as well. That's available for questions. In addition to the car wash modifications to allow additional staging and queuing and upgrading the facilities to the newer technology, they are adding 12 new vacuum spaces, and I'll get into those in further detail. With that, it is a 686-square-foot addition to the west side of the existing car wash tunnel, so next to the NCTD Transit Center parking lot. They'd convert approximately 270 square feet of interior space to a mechanical room, and then the addition of 129-square-foot car wash mechanical room with vacuum producer. That'll help bring forward the current market trends in vacuums for car washes. The image I'm providing to you right now shows the various areas. The areas circled in red will be the 12 spaces that are designated for vacuuming, and I'll have an illustrative that shows the actual vacuum stations, which you'll see off Mission 76 at the newer car wash that opened. That's consistent with the market trends. And then in yellow, I've circled where they'll be widening the queuing so it'll allow two aisles of queuing before you enter the wash. This is the vacuum enclosure that I was speaking of, kind of a focal point to show, to lead people to the car wash, and you can see the two queuing areas, and then the actual structure that'll help identify that there is a good car wash at this location. This is showing the west side of the building, where the mechanical room will be modified for the car wash, and then the existing entry to the car wash and the addition of just some architectural features to, once again, stand, set it off. With that, I provided the vacuum area with the setbacks that we worked with the applicant on, ensure it wasn't in any of the setback areas. And you can see the overhead, the booms that have the proper vacuum to finish the car wash experience. With that, staff recommends confirm that the Planning Commission confirm issuance of a Class III categorical exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures and adopt the attached Planning Commission Resolution approving the development plan and CUP for the car wash component. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is here for questions as well. They don't have a presentation for this commission, but they are available for questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? No. Great, thank you. Pretty straightforward, I think. It is, again, a public hearing item. Applicant has already expressed that they don't have a presentation, but they're ready for any questions we might have, so we'll go over to any slips or speakers that wish to speak on this item. Do we have any this evening?
Chairman, we do not.
Okay. Again, for those of you that did not submit a slip, you're more than welcome to speak on this item before we close out the public hearing. Don't see anybody coming forward, so we will close out the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the commission for discussion, comments, questions, or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve. Confirm issuance of Class III categorical exemption, new construction or conversion of small structure, and adopt Planning Resolution Number 2022 P12 approving the development plan, D2100015, and conditional use permit, Cup 2100018, with findings and conditions of approval attached herein.
Terrific, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Custer. Second?
I'll offer a second and also a comment. I just noticed the new car wash that just opened up, as we were mentioned, as Richard mentioned, the car wash on Fusat 76 in Mission. They offer free car wash today, and I swear to God, the line was huge. So as a marketing ploy, possibly when you open up your new facility, I know that now everybody knows that car wash is there because there must be like at least 50 people or more. I couldn't believe it. It was great. So I don't know if that's in your plans, but anyway, I offer you the best of luck.
Great. So we have a motion by Commissioner Custer to second. On that motion, Commissioner Balma, and that leaves us for our vote.
Chairman Rosales, let the record show that the motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. Mr. Greenbauer, thank you for your short evening with us tonight. We will go to Appeals of the. Let me get my space. Appeal of City Planner's Determination. I don't see anything on the agenda under that heading this evening, so we will go to discussion items, and we do have one item tonight, and that is General Plan Update Phase Two, Project Alternatives. We have a presentation tonight by Russ Cunningham. And just for the good of disclosures, even though we don't typically do it on discussion items, I know we received staff report and attachment, which is titled Alternatives Report, and then we all received a number of emails, and I'm sure Mr. Cunningham will go over all of that.
Thank you, Chair Rosales. You've reminded me that I have some hard copy communication to hand to you.
Thank you. Thanks, Russ.
All other written testimony you received via email. Chair Rosales, Commissioners, good evening. Let's try this again. On March 28th, we came before you with three project alternatives for the second phase of the city's general plan update. Project Alternatives distinguished from one another primarily by their assumptions about future growth and change in the South Morrow Hills community planning area. Once again, what was meant to be a broad discussion of the city's future became a conversation focused almost entirely on South Morrow Hills and concerns about additional housing in that area, with these concerns and the questions they raise. Continuing to take up most of the oxygen in the room at public hearings on the general plan update, staff has decided to separate the planning effort for South Morrow Hills from the GPU and allow the former to proceed at its own pace, and we've communicated that to you in several emails in the interim period. We believe this separation is in the best interests of both the GPU and the South Morrow Hills community plan, as it allows the GPU to move forward while affording time for more research, analysis, and dialogue on how best to address market dynamics in South Morrow Hills and support the long-term economic viability of farming in this area. You had many questions about South Morrow Hills, and we want to make sure that we get you good answers. In light of this decision, the project team has revised the GPU project alternatives to reflect no change to current allowances for housing and agri-tourism in South Morrow Hills. That said, as we've discussed in previous meetings, existing zoning standards for South Morrow Hills allow for considerable change in this area, and we anticipate that change will happen over the 30-year planning horizon of the updated general plan, and this anticipated change is factored into the housing and non-residential growth projections for the project alternatives before you this evening. We are hopeful that we will ultimately come up with a community plan for this important area that manages this change in ways that support farmland conservation, the economic viability of farming, and the city's GHG emission reduction goals. So let's turn to the revised alternatives and what they seek to both acknowledge and accomplish. So if there is a fundamental goal of this effort, we think it's this: The city will accommodate anticipated housing and employment growth in ways that promote quality of life, public health and safety, economic diversity, environmental quality, social equity, and state and regional policies. So how do we do this? Project Alternatives are meant to really emphasize that there are different paths to the same or similar destination, so to speak. Alternatives let us see and understand and talk about the interplay between policies, between market forces as we understand them, and other factors, and how those come together to create the conditions that exist today and conditions that may exist in the future. Alternatives provide additional opportunities for community engagement, and they also meet a CEQA requirement to explore a reasonable range of alternatives and identify environmentally superior alternatives. So let's look at these revised alternatives specifically and begin with key assumptions that are shared between the two alternatives we're bringing before you tonight. It was three alternatives, you'll remember. Two months ago, we're bringing before you just two alternatives this evening. Again, both assume no change to current allowances for housing and agri-tourism in South Morrow Hills. That will be addressed in the community plan on a parallel schedule, essentially. Relative to the alternatives that you saw before in late March, these alternatives assume less overall housing growth, and I can speak to why we have concluded that it is likely we will experience less overall housing growth over the next 30 years. Both alternatives propose minimal conversion of industrial land to mixed use. I know this was a question that the Planning Commission had at the last meeting, question about our industrial land inventory relative to demand. We have an industrial land inventory that is short of estimated industrial land or industrial demand, so we are looking at ways to promote industrial use, both within industrial zones and within commercial zones as well, where appropriate and as appropriate. And these alternatives both assume some concentration of growth in Oceanside Boulevard in that corridor, leveraging the presence of the Sprinter line, leveraging the centrality of Oceanside Boulevard, leveraging the access that Oceanside Boulevard provides to the five, to the 78 and 76 corridors, and the opportunity that development in this corridor provides to improve visual quality and to restore the ecological, aesthetic, and recreational values of La Malt Creek. So let's take a look at Alternative A. Relative to Alternative B, Alternative A assumes more overall housing growth on the order of 20,000 new housing units, again, over the next 30 years, primarily located in the four major commercial corridors, consistent with the corridors plan and the Coast Highway incentive district. Relative to Alternative B, Alternative A assumes more growth in retail and hospitality, though not significantly more. Relative to Alternative B, this alternative assumes more conversion of industrial land to mixed use, and this conversion is focused primarily in areas where transit-oriented development makes sense. So think the intersection of Rancho Del Oro and Oceanside Boulevard, where we have a Sprinter station at a major intersection. Less robust commercial component in mixed-use development, so that essentially means more residential units, lower commercial FAR in mixed-use developments relative, again, to the alternative I'll speak to in just a moment. No industrial use in commercial districts. And again, as I said, when we talk about industrial development in commercial districts, we need to be careful, right? We need to think about the types of uses that can live well in commercial districts, and those are low-impact and low-intensity commercially, or excuse me, industrial uses. And then finally, Alternative A assumes more change in our single-family neighborhoods, primarily more implementation of what we've come to call SB9 units, units facilitated by Senate Bill 9, essentially a state preemption of local zoning that says single-family properties can accommodate two units, and in some cases, those properties can be subdivided into two lots and accommodate as many as four total units. We think under Alternative A that as many as 3,000 SB9 units could be developed over the next 30 years. So let's contrast that alternative with Alternative B. So relative to A, Alternative B assumes less overall housing growth, roughly 17,000 new housing units, less growth in retail and the hospitality sectors, slightly less, minimal conversion of industrial land to mixed use. So both alternatives assume that it is appropriate for a small percentage of industrial land in TOD areas to be available for mixed use. This alternative essentially assumes less conversion of industrial to mixed use. More robust commercial components in mixed-use development, so a higher FAR requirement for mixed-use development, a higher commercial FAR for mixed-use. for mixed-use development, a higher commercial FAR for mixed-use development. This alternative is a little bit more optimistic about the prospect of low-intensity, low-impact industrial uses locating themselves in commercial districts. And this alternative assumes that we will see fewer SB9 units in our single-family neighborhoods, something on the order of 1,500, so roughly half of those assumed under Alternative A. So let's take a look at these two graphs. They're in the Alternatives Report, and they speak to the distribution of projected growth. So to the left, new residential units. You can see the extent to which those housing units are clustered, so to speak, or concentrated in the Oceanside Boulevard corridor, the Mission Avenue corridor, to some extent in the Coast Highway corridor, as incented by the incentive district. Vista Way, fewer opportunities, frankly, for mixed use and new housing in that corridor. And then the other category speaks to housing sites identified in the housing sites inventory and the housing element, the draft housing element, that do not fall within any of these four corridors. And one example of that would be the Lawrence Canyon property, that large, almost 85-acre property that is east of Interstate 5 and south of Highway 76 and just west of the East Side Capistrano neighborhood. We assume that that site will eventually see a significant number of housing units. We also assume, as I alluded to earlier, that there will be some housing development in South Morro Hills under existing zoning standards. And then with respect to non-residential development, we're talking about retail, office, industrial, and hotel development. You can see the distribution between the two, slightly higher industrial under Alternative B, and relatively equal amounts of retail, office, and hotel, though slightly more retail and hotel under Alternative A. So we are looking for concurrence from the Planning Commission, and we realize you may have questions and you may have suggestions, and there are opportunities here to modify these alternatives, but we are looking for your concurrence on a preferred plan, and we believe that preferred plan ought to be Alternative B, and we believe that for these reasons. Alternative B really tracks closer to the city's historical growth over the last 30 years and the trends we've seen in the city's RENA allocations. It provides for a higher jobs-housing ratio, and I should say that both alternatives, relative to the alternatives you saw two months ago, do increase the city's jobs-housing balance, the overall jobs-housing balance. Though again, I would say, as I said two months ago, that we need to be realistic in our expectations as to what sort of jobs-to-housing ratio we can achieve, given the extent to which Oceanside has developed over 130 years as a residential community. And then finally, Alternative B, as I've alluded to, reserves more industrial land for industrial use relative to Alternative A. So again, we're looking for your concurrence on a preferred plan. I'm happy to walk through any components of that plan with you. I thought you might be interested in next steps. As we move forward with a preferred plan, we are in the process of refining the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan based on input we received at an open house conducted several weeks ago. We will probably next come before you with a Smart and Sustainable Corridors specific plan, a regulatory document that will come out of this policy recommendation document, and that will probably be in the fall of this year. We will begin the process of updating the new general plan elements, and here are those elements. Please get familiar with these titles: The Efficient and Compatible Land Use Element, the Integrated Mobility Element, the Vital and Sustainable Resources Element, the Healthy and Livable Community Element, the Safe and Resilient Environment Element, and the Remarkable Community Element. And I'm happy to talk about the content of any of these if you're interested. We will conduct more outreach on the South Morro Hills community plan. We are looking, my colleague Rob D. Mohasky remains the project manager for the community plan, and he is working on a community workshop that will be largely focused on the potential for Tier 2 agritourism. And I will mention, as I have to some of you, under the auspices of our Climate Action Plan and a greenhouse gas emissions measure in our Climate Action Plan that calls upon us to explore agricultural conservation easement acquisition through a state program called the Sustainable Agricultural Lands Conservation Program. In service of that measure, we will be holding a workshop on July 13th, in the evening of July 13th, at the El Corazon Senior Center, to talk about the viability of farmland conservation through the SULC program, what's called the SULC program. We will be looking at the county's PACE program and considering whether an analog of the PACE program might work for the city of Oceanside. And we will have a member of a prominent national land trust present at this meeting to talk about how land trusts go about conserving farmland through the acquisition of easements. So all that is to say, while we've bifurcated these two projects, the planning effort for South Morro Hills is alive and well and continuing. We will be identifying high-level environmental issues. We've already started this process with our environmental consultant, Recon Environmental, and we will continue the CEQA process to ensure that we have a very robust draft environmental impact report that we can share with the community and you as well. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, Russ. I had a few questions. Actually, could you bring your last slide up? I'll start with that. So just to be clear, you're on a last bullet point for my sake and anybody else who's listening. If we're segregating the South Morro Hills community plan and we're being asked to consider the GPU alternatives presented by you, walk me and others through the process of the CEQA process, because what I'm getting at is, when, as you said, the South Morro Hills community plan is active and robust and it's evolving, when do those come together? Because what I'm trying to understand, or have you clarify, is they will come together and will do a single CEQA process opposed to one for everything but South Morro Hills?
So that's very contingent upon where we end up with the community plan. So what I can tell you, Chair Rosales, is that the general plan will assume, again, change and growth in South Morro Hills, something on the order of 900 housing units over the next 30 years, some build-out of Tier 1 agritourism uses, so allowances within current zoning standards. We want to be conservative in that. We want to make sure that we're studying traffic and associated emissions in a responsible way for that area as part of the broader effort. So we are going to make those assumptions, and those are built in to the numbers that you see in the Alternatives Report. If the community plan were ultimately to arrive at a vision relatively consistent with what's currently allowed out there, then the plan could likely simply tear off of the general plan environmental document. If, at the end of the day, that plan provides for more growth and change out there, then it's possible that a separate environmental document have to be prepared for that community plan.
I had a follow-up question, but I'll leave that alone for right now. Let me go to a second question. I'm sure others might want to touch on the South Morro Hill element. The higher jobs-housing ratio, is that a stated goal of the city, or is that just kind of informally what sort of the dialogue's been for many years?
I very much appreciate the question because I do think it is worth reevaluating the emphasis on jobs-housing, particularly given how regional the housing market is. I think I've mentioned to this group before that when you look at "jobs-rich" cities in our region, in North County, Carlsbad and Vista would be two examples, they send as many working residents out of their communities to jobs in other jurisdictions as we do. So there's not a lot of evidence that having more jobs within your jurisdiction means that more of your residents are employed in those jobs. So the dynamic is a complex one. It's regional. It even goes beyond the region. As you know, we have folks in Oceanside who work in South Orange County. We have folks in Oceanside who work in portions of the inland empire, certainly in job centers like Sereno Valley and downtown San Diego. So it's complicated. Why do we want to have more jobs here? Well, for a lot of reasons. One that comes to mind for me is having more daytime population here. That's part of our effort to grow our economy. If we have more people here during the day to have lunch, to pick up goods at the grocery store on their way back to Carlsbad or back to Vista, that benefits us economically. So that's one reason to have more jobs in Oceanside. And certainly, despite what I said a moment ago, I think it's important that the city work to provide local job opportunities so that residents have more of an opportunity to work in the same city that they live in.
Okay.
But all of that said, just one last comment. I know that the magic number has always been a jobs-housing ratio of one or better.
Yeah.
And again, it's very unlikely that the city can get to that number. We can get quite close, but that we can get to that number, given our history as a residential community.
Yeah, and that's kind of why I came, as I was reading through the material, I came up with a question because I wondered, was that formal or informal? Is it just kind of a reasonable expectation that we should have? So it sounds like it's a little bit more of that, reasonable expectation and less formal in terms of the idea of the one-to-one ratio. Last question from me, at least for the moment, is the kind of units in Alternative A versus B, different, same, very close, or was that not at all analyzed, the types of units? I'm talking condos versus residential homes and that sort, or again, was that not analyzed at all?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's really mostly about assumptions about density, primarily within the corridors, and what sort of densities mixed-use projects in the form of infill and redevelopment will achieve. So by and large, our housing product is going to be attached. It's going to be urban. Our opportunities for detached, single-family now are very, very limited. We talked about SB9 units in existing, single-family neighborhoods. There is some potential in South Morro Hills. Outside of that, we are, in the traditional sense, built out from that standpoint.
Terrific. I'll go to my screen for Commissioner questions. For the new commissioners, since we are using our screens more often, there is a way for you to identify that you would like to make a comment or a question. So if you want to do that, queue in, and I see Commissioner Obama's first in line, followed by Commissioner Dodd's.
I also have three questions. The first one, you had talked about lessening the impact of SB9 in the different scenarios, A and B. How, because this is a state-mandated kind of ordinance or law, how does that work? Because you said in Alternative B, it would be less of a factor versus in Alternative A, it would be more. So how does that, I don't understand how it changes.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. And I wanted to spare all of you a lot of the preamble I provided at the end of March, and you may remember some of that preamble let you know that while the alternatives, to some extent, are policy-driven, I would say, to at least the same extent, they are driven by assumptions about market forces, assumptions about what the demand for SB9 units will be in these neighborhoods. You're absolutely right. We have little-to-no control over how many of those units develop. There's been some assessment at the state level, very high level, about Oceanside's capacity for these units. We think that that assessment pitched the number pretty high. It was above 3,000 units. So we actually brought that number down in both of these alternatives. And the more we look at our single-family neighborhoods and the way they lay out and the average lot size and things of that sort, it seems that opportunities for SB9 units are relatively limited.
That's good. The other question is on the industrial land differences between A and B. You have intensification in B with more high-tech industrial. Is that more like a genentech? Is that a genentech would be considered industrial, like high-tech?
Yeah, absolutely.
So who would be trying to get more of them and less of, I don't know, what would be another industrial person that we have already? But anyway, is that the difference?
Yeah, you have it right. So when we talk about more intensive, we're not talking about uses that are more industrial, per se, but that have a higher employment density.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're looking for industrial uses that provide more employees per square foot and per acre. And so part of the vision is in that portion of industry, from Industry and Oceanside Boulevard out to Garrison, where in, I believe it was Alternative B, we were looking at the prospect of that converting to mixed use. We've backed off that idea, thinking that, you know, given the desire to expand our employment base and preserve industrial land, we do what we can to incent that kind of development in that stretch, which is largely occupied by very low-density, low-employment uses like contractor yards and vehicle storage facilities, things of that sort. So if we could get the types of uses that we're now seeing in, say, Ocean Ranch or Ardeo and those locations, we think that would be ideal.
That's cool. My third question is in the roadway improvement section, and specifically, I hate to bring up a North River Road, but that's, you know, my neighborhood, the four-lane addition of four lanes all the way from 76 all the way into Vandergriff North River Road where it intersects, which to me is just like, I mean, we were always hoping in our neighborhood that we would have always a two-lane and just have more turning lefts and rights rather than have to have four lanes, because it's just going to increase our cut-through people, which is the people going to the military base, I think against Camp Pendleton, but that's probably at least half of the population of cars is at least, maybe more, go through that road, and making it easier for them would just make them more likely to take that versus 76. So if we do have to go to improvements in the roadway, I would hope we'd kind of maybe look at a lot of traffic calming type of a, not so much signals, but some way to make it so it's not such a very fast, it's not very appealing, especially if we're going to want to put agritourism along North River Road. Like, say, right now, we have the Milano Farm stand. If you put a four-lane road there with a, trying to do a farm stand, it pretty much kills the possibility, well, it doesn't kill it, but it's going to make it definitely a little bit more exciting to get in and out of there. So I just would hope that that four-lane, maybe, I mean, I understand, does the traffic, people have studied that thoroughly, and that's why they've proposed that, or how'd that come to four lanes?
Well, first of all, those are excellent observations about kind of the trade-offs associated with expanding roadways. I will tell you that the current circulation element identifies North River Road as a four-lane facility. I appreciate the question because it gives me an opportunity to say that others are expressing a similar concern about the expansion of North River, yeah, North River Road, excuse me. I got tongue-tied because should North River Farms move forward in some fashion, it would make improvements to North River that would expand the roadway to accommodate four lanes if at some point four lanes are determined to be necessary, given traffic volumes. Yeah, but your point about traffic calming, about, you know, we see it on Coast Highway, right? Because Coast Highway continues to be an alternative to the five, we get traffic that, much of which is not patronizing any businesses in the corridor, it's just getting from point A to point B somewhere. It's just getting from point A to point B somewhere well beyond Oceanside. And that's something that we, frankly, that we want to discourage.
Well, I just got back from Bryce Canyon. In Utah, they have large roundabouts that are definitely very functional. And so I really, really experienced a lot of them driving through that state. So I hope that that would be a traffic calming. It definitely slows people down. And so I know that our traffic engineering department are very fond of roundabouts. So hopefully, that would be something we could introduce if we have to do something to improve traffic flow on North River.
Yes, and I believe, again, going back to the North River Farms project, if that project were to move forward, I believe the project would be required to implement at least one roundabout.
I think it was two.
Maybe two, yeah.
Thank you, Russ.
Thanks. Commissioner Dodd's.
I think you might have answered one of my questions, but I do have three myself. The first question I do have is, how are you projecting your job-housing ratio increase?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. To be honest, it's largely, the increase in jobs to housing is largely due to the assumption that our growth in, our housing growth will be less than we anticipated under the alternatives that we brought forward to you two months ago. So if we're building fewer homes relative to jobs, we're going to improve our jobs-to-housing ratio. And we're not, I just, I want to be clear that we're not being arbitrary, that there is a basis for this assumption, that we will see fewer housing units. And that basis really is an interpolation of the RENA numbers that we've received over the last several cycles. Those RENA numbers go down with each eight-year cycle. They went from 6,300 units in 2013 to roughly 5,400 units in 2021. If that trend continues, we're looking at a RENA obligation over the next 30 years on the order of 18,000 to 19,000 units. So we think it's responsible to peg our projections to that RENA number. We've never actually produced housing consistent with those numbers. And it's not our obligation to do so. Our obligation is to ensure that there is capacity for those units. And if the demand is there, allowing the private market to produce those units.
Thank you. Southern Califor, not even Southern California. California in itself is a commuter state. And you did mention that between Vista, Carlsbad, Oceanside, the majority, there are a lot of people who travel outside of that city, of the cities to work. I was one of them. So it's conceivable that even when you build housing, there's still going to be traveling outside. So I was just concerned about how we're projecting that we build housing, that we're going to increase jobs. And part of that would tie into my question is that what type of jobs are we bringing in? Because if it's just like retail, those are fairly low-paying jobs. And that may not be enough to be able to support the type of housing that's going to be built. So my question would be is what type of house, what type of jobs are we projecting to bring in?
Yeah, thank you for the question. And I'll hearken back to 2019, when this body recommended approval of the first phase of the general plan update, which included an economic development element. The commissioners who were seated at the time will recall that one of the key themes of the economic development element is diversity. We want a diverse economy. We don't want all our eggs in one basket, right? We don't want to just be a visitor-serving economy. We don't just want to be an industrial economy or a retail economy. So I think a reasonable answer to your question is we're looking for a broad growth, a broad spectrum of job growth. We do want to grow our industrial base with 21st century industrial. We do believe that introducing housing into the corridors will spur demand for retail that perhaps isn't there now. Office is a tough one because, you know, we've seen a lot less demand for office with all the changes in the work environment, telecommuting, et cetera. It's really hard to project a lot of office development. But oftentimes, you see office in conjunction with industrial, right? Where they have their administrative offices or they even have showrooms and things like this that have almost a retail component to them. So we're looking for a real mix. We do want to continue to build our hospitality sector and make that more multifaceted, including with agritourism going forward. And hopefully, that gets us to a point where we can better weather economic downturns because we have that broad range of uses and job producers in the city.
Thank you. My last question is, is there a projection for a percentage of low-income housing increase?
So we have an inclusionary housing ordinance that ostensibly requires the 10% of units in a market-rate housing development be set aside and be reserved for lower-income households. We also have an in-loe fee, which allows those projects to pay a fee to the city that the city leverages to produce projects like Mission Cove and La Mission. We are working on an updated inclusionary ordinance. The city council has signaled its interest in seeing future development choose to build the units on-site rather than simply paying the in-loe fee. And they're trying to fashion an inclusionary ordinance that incents that. So it's going to be a combination, I think, of incentives and sticks and carrots, essentially, that make the in-loe fee a little bit less attractive and make building units on-site a little bit more attractive. We also have density bonus. And depending on the amount of affordable housing provided, those projects receive additional density allowance and any number of what we call concessions or waivers to development standards. And you've seen quite a few of those projects come before you over the course of last year. So those are two ways we're getting affordable housing, with the third being as the city takes in those fees and looks to leverage federal and state grant funding and working with nonprofit and sometimes for-profit affordable housing developers, getting projects, again, like Mission Cove and La Mission, built.
Thank you.
I want to go back to the jobs and housing ratios. So just to be clear, so I understand, if we choose Alternative B, so there would be less housing, it's not as though there's less housing, so the jobs will fill in that gap? There are maybe some opportunities where a conversion or zoning change may happen, but it's not a, if it's the right analogy, but tit-for-tat, fewer housings means more jobs? It's not that simplistic?
No, no, it's not a zero-sum game between housing and residential. In fact, I would say, as I just mentioned in response to Commissioner Dodd's question, I think the introduction of housing in these corridors will promote job growth. I think it will create demand for retail, for restaurant, for other uses that are in walking distance of this new housing that will produce jobs. We're also, and I think I spoke to this last time in the industrial realm, we kind of have a three-pronged strategy. One is to incent more efficient use of our industrial land. We haven't come up with those incentives yet, but we're looking to incent that. We're also, again, looking to essentially liberalize commercial zoning standards to allow certain types of industrial uses in commercial zones where there's less demand for commercial use and perhaps some demand for industrial use. And then on the flip side, we're looking at more restrictive industrial land use standards that don't open our industrial districts to any and every use, which is frankly, kind of what we allow now. So we have a lot of institutional uses in our industrial zones. We have a lot of service-oriented uses in our industrial zones. So maybe over time, those are, and a lot of those uses, we believe, belong in commercial districts. And they would add to the vitality of commercial districts. But they go into the industrial district because it's less expensive generally to do so. So if we can help some of those businesses transition into commercial zones and free up some existing space for jobs intense 21st century industrial uses, we think that's a win-win.
Yeah, I think you captured what I was thinking very well in summarizing sort of those three points, the incentive, the conversions and so forth, as the real drivers and real opportunities to bring in additional industrial, higher-paying sort of jobs as opposed to, you know, the housing, or, excuse me, Alternative B, having fewer housing and thereby singularly attracting industrial jobs. So I didn't want to leave that impression that if we adopt Alternative B, that, poof, there's this magic. Okay, that means more industrial jobs. It's a lot of different strategies, and you just laid it out very nicely. Thank you. Commissioner Simons?
Yeah, I'd just like to dovetail, yeah, to dovetail on the quality of jobs discussion. And you said that, you mentioned that that was in some of these general plan updates. But as I look at the guiding principles for all of these general plan elements that are on the screen here and also in the report, I don't see that as one of our guiding principles, although it seems to be a pretty hefty discussion here. So which general plan element would we find this as it starts to come through? And is there room to make this kind of a guiding, add this as a guiding principle to one of these elements?
Yeah, I appreciate that question because it reminds me that, to some extent, we've taken for granted that two, three years ago, we adopted an economic development element, which is very much focused on this issue. And that is, you know, part of the overall general plan. But we shouldn't forget that it's important to integrate these themes and really reiterate these themes across elements, right? We don't want to silo concerns about employment and policies that are employment-related in one element. So I would say in the land use element, Commissioner, we can look for ways to promote high-quality job growth. Let's see, where else might we do that? I think that would be the principal focus outside of the economic development would be in the efficient and compatible land use element, that we can develop some jobs-related policies, goals and policies.
Even if it's something that is, transcends, you know, many of the elements, right? It goes across a lot of the elements. Then, you know, adding it to the vision is that we develop not just jobs, but the type and quality of jobs that we would like to bring to the community.
So Commissioner, are you thinking that maybe we go back and revisit the community vision and consider adding another guiding principle that's jobs-related?
Well, I'm just saying that it's garnered a lot of discussion. And there seems to be a lot of concern, or not concern, but interest in promoting the types and quality of jobs that are not, that are the type and quality of jobs that the people that live here would then be employed here. And maybe that should be an emphasis in our vision.
Yes, and I'm kind of thinking out loud about how we emphasize that important point and objective without formally revising a document that the city council has essentially accepted. I think we can do that. And again, I think we can do that primarily in, well, I mentioned the efficient and compatible land use element. We also have an opportunity with the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan. Most of the employment will be in or adjacent to those corridors. So we'll look at, not only policy language, the specific plan will be a regulatory document. We will look at opportunities to establish a regulatory framework that promotes employment and high-quality employment.
So from a process standpoint, the general plan elements come to us as you put them together and we look at them one at a time? Or do they come as a complete general plan update? Like, how does that go?
So there is something of an expectation on the part of leadership that we get this project essentially soup to nuts in front of you and the city council in the summer of next year. To do that, we're going to have to be relatively efficient. So one of those efficiencies is to produce draft elements, conduct some open-house events where we target maybe two elements per open-house event, invite the general public and our commissioners to attend those events and provide input. And then those draft elements will be presented to you along with the draft environmental impact report. So you would have an opportunity to respond, to provide comment on both the environmental report and the elements themselves, which are the subject of that environmental impact report.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Russ, I think for the moment, anyway, we're out of questions. We all had our three. Well, Commissioner Simons only had one, but. So we are going to go to the public. I know there's some interest in providing some comments. So we'll start with the first on your list.
Thank you, Chairman Rosales. And forgive me for my earlier mix-up. So let me try this again. We now have five slips. I'm going to go ahead and call you one at a time just to make it a little easier. And first will be John Badorf again. And again, forgive me, sir.
And for the record, if all the speakers would give us your name, and you all have three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Absolutely. So my name is John Badorf with CleanEarthForKids.org. It is very important to update zoning for industrial and light industrial areas. As was shown with the recent Kim Station situation, these type of businesses are a big problem for the local communities. They are not compatible with residential areas. A wide buffer is absolutely necessary between these types of businesses and homes and schools. Sound and air pollution are major problems, and residents must be protected. Proper zoning is the first line of defense. I am concerned about more industrial areas as that means more pollution. Jobs are important, but human health must take priority. That needs to be a guiding principle. For the farming areas, buffer zones between the use of agricultural pesticides and residential areas, schools, water sources, and habitat are incredibly important. Pesticide spray and volatilization drift is dependent on many factors, most of which are unpredictable and uncontrollable, which results in toxic chemicals traveling a great distance through the air. Two recent California studies showed elevated childhood cancer risk from 13 agricultural pesticides applied up to two and a half miles away. The pesticide 24D has been shown to drift 10 to 50 miles under certain conditions. There should not be any residential areas anywhere near a farm that uses pesticides. There are studies linking pesticides with increased risk of things like Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, asthma, lung disease, and cancer, leukemia, lymphoma, autism, blood and nerve disorders, diabetes, birth defects, miscarriages, sterility, depression, anxiety, ADD, and ADHD. Research also links pesticides to epigenetic, transgenerational inheritance, where the harms from pesticides are inherited by future generations. The city must work with county, state, and federal resources to help farmers switch to regenerative, organic farming, which would stop the use of toxic pesticides, which is good for the water and air and healthy soil, which will help stop climate change. We have some of the best agricultural land in the country here in Oceanside. We need to protect it by keeping it farmland, but also protect the hard-working farmers and their families from toxic pesticides. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next, we have Diane. I believe the last name starts with an N. And you have three minutes, please.
I believe it starts with an N. I'll try to write better next time. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Diane Nygaard. And I'm here tonight representing Preserve Calavera. We hope you had a chance to read our comment letter. I'm just going to highlight three of the things from that here tonight. Our mission is to preserve, protect, and enhance the natural resources of coastal North County. So when we see projections for thousands of more people and thousands of more jobs, that immediately, you know, raises some concerns. It's really important that we do it right. And for the most part, this has done it right. And it's certainly vastly improved, we think, from the last version that came before you in March. We're really concentrating our development in the corridors where we have the infrastructure in place. And that really is smart growth. And when we grow smart, in theory at least, we conserve more of those natural lands and more opportunities for parks, and those are critical. But the details really matter. So I ask you to consider these three points and hopefully include them in your comments and direction back to council and staff. Parks and open space are key to our quality of life. We've got lots of changes in land use for housing and jobs. Not one acre of land added for parks and open space. Our strategic plan for parks that we're, many areas of the city are short park plan. We need to need to make sure that that does get addressed. And we know if we don't take care of recreational needs, when we see the impact on our natural lands, we, people love those lands to death. So it's really important that we address both. Secondly, preservation of agriculture. Like you were raising the concern about the right kind of jobs. It's not just adding the jobs, but the right kind of jobs. How do we make sure that that really moves forward? Preservation of agriculture was called out as one of the primary objectives of this effort, yet it also is not included in the guiding principles. It's not mentioned at all part of the guiding principles. I think everybody in this community now is on board with the idea of preserving agriculture. The details of how we do that, we still have to work out. But that primary concept really, we hope, needs to be addressed. And third, on SB 9, absolutely, we're all really concerned about the impact on our single-family neighborhoods. Alternative A includes one assumption, if I understand it, Russell, correct me if I'm wrong, included 3,000 additional units in single-family residential neighborhoods from SB 9, whereas alternative B included 1,500. That's no real difference. That's a difference in what assumption we're using as a basis. We actually have an opportunity to make a real difference in that. Other cities are working very diligently on this. I know our city has started to work on it. We haven't seen anything pop out yet. Those laws allow us to make exemptions based on health and safety considerations. We need to put more effort into doing that and protect those single-family neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nygaard. Next speaker?
Next, we have Ellen Bartlett. Please come forward, and you will have three minutes to speak.
How many minutes do I have?
Three minutes.
I hope you can hear me okay with the mask on. I'd just rather leave it on. Is that okay?
Yes, it is. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I did send you an email, but I just wanted to touch on a couple of points as well. First, as Diane said, we would like to have agricultural preservation and viability. It should be specifically listed as a guiding principle, which it's not. And we think that should be put in there and in the organizing themes and guiding principles. I think that should be put in there. Secondly, I don't, I'm not quite sure why limited, I don't agree with large-scale Tier 2 agritourism, but I'm not sure why limited Tier 2 agritourism is not anywhere in either of the plans. I think it should be. It would, obviously not large-scale, I don't want large-scale infrastructure out there, but small scale would be really good to help with the economic sustainability of the region out there. So we would not be putting housing developments if we had limited Tier 2 agriculture. I think that would help people living out, farmers living out there. So I think you should be putting some interest in Tier 2 agriculture, which is missing. Also, I did want to just say something about people talking about, well, jobs-to-housing ratio doesn't really matter because, you know, people work out of their own city. Paradigms have shifted, and when we look at what young people are experiencing in today's world, it's not what I was experiencing, and it's totally different. Young people would like to work close to home. Our daughter and son-in-law live in Oceanside, and our daughter specifically found a job that was in Oceanside close to home, because they have an eight-year-old son. My son-in-law works from home. He had been, quite a few years ago, traveling up to Orange County, which he did not like. If people can find good jobs in Oceanside, young people, most of us here are a little bit older, but the world is different now, and we have to understand that the paradigm's shifted. So I think the jobs-to-housing ratio is important. I think young people would like to work in Oceanside a good job. So I disagree with that. And last thing, what else did I, oh, I have 47 seconds. I don't believe North River Road should be expanded unless it's just for safety reasons, you know, if there's hazardous, you know, some type of evacuation going on. I think the pretense of expanding North River Road and then saying, oh, now we can build more houses out there, shouldn't be what's going to be happening. So I think, I didn't like when I was saying that North River Road was going to be expanded from two lanes to four lanes unless there's a specific safety or evacuation reason for that. And thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next, we have Joan Bachmann. If you'll come forward, you have three minutes.
Good evening, planning commissioners, Joan Bachmann. I want to say I'm a stakeholder in probably three different ways. I have rental property on the corner of South Nevada and Oceanside Boulevard, literally on Oceanside Boulevard. My church is in the corridor plan, and I'm vice president of the council at the moment. And I'm president of Friends of El Corazon, which is a mile of Oceanside Boulevard. We don't own it, we're just the stewards, keeping the city on track. So and first, I want to say thanks to staff. This whole process has been good design. I'm really happy to see it. I like the way it's happening. And the things that are going into it are the best of new thinking. It's really great. So happy to see that. I have a number of things here. First, I can't find the definition of avenue in the report. It's used in the text, but it wasn't defined, and maybe this isn't the place for it. But the entire concept of nodes and avenues plus skyline are very important. It's key to livability and economic vitality, avoids the strip malls, and it needs more emphasis and explanation. The wildlife corridor that crosses all three of there are things as birds migrate and other animals from south to north and vice versa. It needs to be acknowledged. And again, the nodes and avenues plus skyline solves the problem that has been identified in numerous letters to the staff. Now, a couple of things just in the text. On page 20, wildfire paragraph needs to be changed. I would like to see it say wildfires are almost always the cause of human activity. This is true. Our wildfires occur when we're not having lightning. There's no other source of ignition, natural source. The prevention of damage should focus on reducing the human causes of fire and hardening structures before considering destroying habitat. Habitat is stressed during drought and should be supported, not destroyed. I'd like to see some change in that language. On page 45, connector sidewalk types, it shows the sidewalk next to the road. That doesn't work for all the neighborhoods west of Five. It doesn't work for Loma Alta Eastside. And Fire Mountain's going to need a whole different solution for that. I agree with you on North River Road. Improving it to four lanes destroys the rural character of the area and is growth-inducing. It will cause more growth, more traffic. And finally, I want to know, do we have enough units to push back on the state mandates? We're meeting the RINA targets. So when we're asking, how do we deal with the state laws, and all these politicians are saying, I'll do it, no, they won't. You're in the room where it's happening. This is the plan. We will have a plan. Then we can talk to the state. So this is great, to be moving this forward, to be able to do it. And we're doing it in the right way. We're not messing up neighborhoods. We're putting it where last mile is solved. And it's just an awesome plan for that. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bachmann. Next speaker?
Next, we have Cindy Davenport. If you'd please come forward, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm leaving my mask on, too. My nephew just came down with COVID and because no one at his restaurant where he was working was wearing masks, and they closed the restaurant. So I do want to keep everyone safe and keep our businesses safe, and I'll keep wearing a mask. It's the least that I can do. My name is Cindy Davenport, and I live in historic Loma Alta. And so I want to greet you, commissioners, and also thank you for asking all those questions on March 28. And then staff went on to conduct additional research and analysis. And so I want to thank staff for determining that the Southmore Hills Community Plan should be separated from the general plan update process. I do think more study and data is a good thing, and it should help us see a more clear path to actual protection of farmland in Oceanside and to prevent sprawl development, which helps no one. So as others have, I ask that you please make sure there is a guiding principle specifically for farmland preservation. I do support limited Tier 2 activities in Southmore Hills farmland without large infrastructure expansion. So along that line, the expansion of North River Road to four lanes doesn't make sense unless it is only and clearly for public safety reasons. Otherwise, it encourages sprawl development and more traffic. I do appreciate hearing Commissioner Balma's comment about four lanes on North River Road, which is bringing more cut-through traffic. And very importantly, it would not facilitate the Tier 2 agritourism activities that we would like to see. So traffic calming does sound like a much better idea for North River Road. So because any housing affects our environment in our climate action plan, I encourage strict adherence to the city's commitment to accommodating future housing and employment growth primarily through efficient land use in already urbanized areas. Because Oceanside does have a low jobs-housing ratio, alternative B does come closer to accommodating more new jobs. I do appreciate hearing Russ elaborate more this evening. The staff report also notes that alternative B would preserve more open space and sensitive habitat. So please do address adding more parks. That helps everyone. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Rob Howard. If you'll please come forward, you will also have three minutes.
Commissioners, staff, just had a couple of things throughout that discussion. One, I really, and if you guys heard me talk about this, I really would like to hear us talk more about how we're integrating the whole versus one piece or another when we're doing our planning. As we're talking about the housing, didn't hear anything about how we're looking at from an energy perspective, particularly, we're not talking about Southmore Hills right now, but if we don't really focus on the energy piece of that, then we're not addressing our water issues, we're not addressing the farming issues, we're not really focused on that. So I would like us to really talk and integrate in the piece where, as you've heard speakers before, when we're talking about how we use that land, parks and other things, young people we're talking to now really care about the environment more than we do. So versus the four-lane issue, if we're looking at the agritourism, I would, me, and I'm not an engineer or a traffic engineer, but literally having the expansion of what amounts to a lane, but split it to where now I've got bike ability, or even if it's not on the road, but improve that area off to the side where there's ability to do biking. Because what happens is, if you build bigger lanes, you're going to fill it with traffic. It's just, that's just what happens. But if we're looking at having a more environmentally friendly approach, then we need to look at the corridors. Because like Oceanside Boulevard, I'll go back to the, because I know we're running out of time. You talked about the car wash. And I keep asking myself, is there planning that we do, and then people come in, and when they talk to Oceanside, they, Oceanside lets them know this is what we're looking for? Or do people just come with stuff and we just do it? Because that area, to me, we've got an airport there, nice little, like the steam engine museum. It can be something small, talking about the airport. We're talking about putting the wave park. But wouldn't it be wonderful to have a place where people coming off the Five, heading out to 76, they stop here for dinner and don't go to Bonza? Those are the kind of things I'm really kind of looking to hear, and I don't hear that. Now, I'm not saying that people aren't doing that, but think about it. If you have that plan, then we can make sure that the areas, the natural land and the parks are there. Imagine almost like a river walk in that area where people now, we've preserved our river area, we're preserving the pieces, they can stop here and drop their money in Oceanside, because that's what we want them to do. Then they can wait till traffic goes away and they can head out. So I'm just looking for a broader approach, being communicated to those of, like myself, who are out there listening to this, and then focusing on energy policy associated with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker will be Daniel Dominguez. All right. You have three minutes, sir.
As I'm the last speaker, I'll keep it short, maybe. My name is Daniel Dominguez. I'm almost a 30-year resident of Oceanside. I live in Southmore Hills. The wife and I have a small horse ranch in Morel Hills. I thank the commission, the commission staff for separating the Southmore Hills issue from the other alternatives. I think the comment was made that Southmore Hills was sucking up all the oxygen in the room. And reality is, because it was for a good cause, the residents of Oceanside are very concerned what happens to Southmore Hill. On the way up here, hopefully it wasn't a sign. On the radio, all of a sudden, I started hearing Tony Mitchell and pave paradise and put up a parking lot. Hopefully, that is not what happens to Morel Hills. The Oceanside is unique with all the coastal cities because they have a large contiguous agricultural section. I don't think that occurs in any other city in the coastal areas, at least in Southern California. So we need to focus on utilizing that unique character and building agritourism. I support agritourism. My predecessor before me talked about the four-lane roadway, and he stole my comments right from me, because I was, had a question about, you know, why are we building a four-lane road? And then, is this going to get separated with the Morel Hills issue, or are we just going to do it under one of the alternatives? And from the comments, it appears we're just going to do it under one of the alternatives. Well, if you're going to, I would say, North River Roads needs a lot of attention. A small lane, two-lane, some of the land is encroaching on the road, needs to be cleared out. But if we're going to do something, then instead of building a four-lane road, we should fix the two-lanes and then build bicycle path, because we're going to need that with climate change and agritourism, and it enhances the area instead of just building a big roadway. Anyway, I also agree with the comments made that we should put it in the vision statement to support agriculture and also to support the farmers so that agriculture becomes sustainable. With that, I think I'm meeting my commitment that I was going to keep it short. The last thing is Daniel Dominguez, long-term resident of Oceanside, and I'm also running for city council, District 2. Thank you.
Thank you. No, any more slips?
No, that concludes our speakers, Chair.
Great, thank you. Russ, you want to maybe talk about some of the things you heard? I took some notes, but if you want to start on anything that captured your attention?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. What captures my attention is the prevailing theme of integrating reference to farmland conservation in the document. And I just want to point to the fact that the community vision references Southmore Hills, our farming resources, and the challenges that they face, and our desire to overcome those challenges three times on page six, page 19, and page 21 of the community vision. In the alternatives report, under the theme of vital and sustainable resources, it reads, "This element will address habitat and wildlife conservation, agricultural preservation and viability, et cetera, et cetera." And then one of the guiding principles under that theme, did I refer to that as a guiding principle? That is a theme, vital and sustainable resources. The guiding principles begin with preservation of natural resources. And this element, consistent with state law and guidance, will address farmland as a natural resource. So I do feel that we have in both the community vision and in this document acknowledged the importance of doing what we can to preserve that valuable resource in Oceanside. If there are particular public comments you'd like me to address, I'm happy to do that.
No, thanks for starting with that one. I heard some additional comments about parkland and open space. I think the, if you want to maybe expand on that or take that one up.
Yeah, thank you. And I think we all want to see as much park space as possible. We are certainly constrained as a, you know, traditionally built-out city with most of our land being in private hands, not in public hands. Two years ago, we updated our Parks and Rec Master Plan. That Parks and Rec Master Plan largely calls upon the city to look at existing park facilities and do what we can to ensure that those facilities are programmed in a way that suits the recreational tastes and interests of our community. So there is some reference to properties that could have potential as park spaces. One example that immediately comes to mind is the old French Fields in the industrial zone that's just south of the Sprinter tracks off of North Avenue, I believe that's off of North Avenue. But generally speaking, we're looking to enhance our existing parks and program them for the 21st century. Now, we hear a lot about pickleball, we hear a lot about, you know, other uses that generally aren't accommodated in our parks, and the fact of the matter is, right now, our parks are generally underutilized. So we'd like to see them better utilized. In the context of the corridors and the corridor plan, you'll see language and you'll see graphics that speak to greener corridors, corridors that provide for passeos and plazas and linear parks where possible. So we're going to work very hard in the corridor-specific plan to develop guidelines and requirements that incent and require new development to provide, both on private property and within the public right-of-way, spaces for gathering, spaces for social interaction, spaces for recreation, albeit urban. So, you know, we're talking again about linear parks, we're talking about maybe tot lots, passeos, plazas, that I think will complement our park system.
Yeah, good information. Thank you. And the last note I had that I think we wanted to touch on was North River Road and the four-lane versus calming or other elements that could, you know, maybe restrict the amount of traffic that might be invited in there if it were expanded and so forth. So can you touch on that element, North River Road, and that thought that it may be expanded to four lanes and what that does in terms of inviting development?
Yeah, with the important caveat that I'm not a traffic planner or a traffic engineer, I do appreciate that comment because I think, to a large extent, we've taken for granted that we will carry forward that assumption in the circulation element about North River Road, and maybe we need to revisit that. So I don't have any problem saying that we will revisit that. There may be an argument that, you know, concerns about traffic congestion, and particularly about ingress and egress into the North Valley area and the South Moro Hills area, it may be more about the capacity, the roadway capacity over the river. So, you know, whether that's an additional river crossing or expansion of existing river crossings, that may be more, a more salient issue in terms of addressing traffic congestion, concerns about people's ability to get out of that area in the event that there's emergency, things of that sort, than expanding North River Road to four lanes. So I think that's something worth exploring.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Custer, you had a comment or question?
Yes. Has the city considered, I know the school district has sold off some schools recently, for example Garrison, has the city considered or attempted to buy any of these and convert them into open space or park space?
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't know that we have, this may be something that the city planner can speak to, but I think there was some interest at one time, maybe there is still interest on the part of water utilities in the Garrison site.
Commissioner Custer, so, yes, the school district recently had two former school sites. They had requests for proposals. The city did enter into agreement to purchase three acres of the Garrison site for a sewer lift station. So they did, but not for the balance of it. Those have been sold at market rate to residential housing developers that we'd be bringing forth residential projects on both the Pacifica Elementary Site and the Garrison Site. So you'll see those probably in the fall, may, no, not in the fall, you may see them this time next year, I'm guessing. So no, the city has not made efforts to purchase those sites for open space.
It seems that would be a potential source of parks for the kids, for sports, for open space. Thank you.
Commissioner, I want to acknowledge that, you know, our coastal area is relatively parks poor. I think maybe citywide, we have a reasonable number of parks and a reasonable amount of park acreage, but in the coastal zone, there's not a lot.
Yeah.
So as part of the incentive district, one of the incentives, I should say, yeah, one of the incentives is additional residential density and building height in exchange for certain public benefits, and one of those public benefits is public open space associated with the new development. So we've actually had, and this is, you know, this is very preliminary and speculative, but we've actually had a couple of inquiries from the development community about a site that's in the dip section of Coast Highway, a portion of which is in the Loma Alta Creek floodway, where development can't happen anyway, where it's been considered as a potential public park site that would then provide that public benefit that would allow for that, the city to then grant additional density and building height. So we're going to continue to look for opportunities like that site by site.
Yeah. Yeah, other than Buccaneer Beach, I can't think of a coastal park in the city. That happens to be a nice one. Okay, we're being asked to, I don't see any other, oh, Commissioner Balma, you do have your, go ahead.
On that note with the parks, sorry. On the subject of parks, like since we have the ocean, which is a huge park, but we do have rivers, we have Stanley Ray River, we have the Alto Noma, we have, there's three, right? There's Buccaneer, okay. If we can only, if we can figure out more ways we can use that habitat for walkways, bikeways, I don't know, Diane, your Sierra Club and all that, I mean, if there's a way that the environmental groups can work with the people groups and be able to utilize all those areas, that'd be kind of a cool, it's a huge park. I mean, the Stanley Ray Bike Trail is awesome. I mean, we have some issues now with the homeless situation, but I mean, that's just a beautiful bike path that I've done millions of times. So it's a great place to go and populate, and the same with the other rivers. But anyway, that's just a subject for, to add on to, for parks and open space is our riverways we have.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. I'll just mention that an action item of this general plan is a Trails Master Plan.
I saw that.
And we will certainly be looking at these riparian corridors for opportunities for trails. And I think that speaks a little bit to Mr. Howard's comment about river walks and opportunities to kind of experience these natural areas, which we would hope to restore and improve the ecological value of, along with introducing more, you know, public access.
And when we do bring in, bring in the South Moro Hills Community Plan, that has a really robust biking path that goes all the way through South Moro Hills. That's something that we've always tried and strive to have, is a very, a robust kind of like bike trail system. So that's another way. Like, you know, my whole passion was always to the top of the Sleeping Indian, which is that cinder cone you all see when you look out there. That's actually, someone owns that land, but we could hopefully maybe buy it and maybe make that a park someday, because it'd be a great trailhead for Oceanside. That's been something I've always wanted to do. But what I wanted to speak to was, there's been several people out here that talk about preserving agriculture, and we should have that in our plan, but that's someone's land. So if the city citizens want to join in and have a fund to help buy that land, that'd be one way to preserve farmland. But then you actually have to have a farmer that's going to farm it. So it's very hard to have people say that when you haven't really been farming, like another gentleman talked about, don't use pesticides and herbicides, all that stuff. Well, that's just a whole nother way of farming that also costs a lot more money. So I don't know how, maybe an education factor on how farming actually operates and how the cost of that, and we'd all like, I mean, I'm not really a true farmer, I'm called a gentleman farmer. We have 25 acres of avocados in South Moro Hills, but we pay pretty much to farm. So it's kind, when you have a higher level of acreage, like a lot of the large farmers have, they're able to spread that cost out and they can, they're able to still continue to farm profitably and pay for every, all the costs. But the one thing you're going to do on July 20, on July 13th, the, looking into the agricultural land preserves, those are like a really great idea, but just to say, the last two pieces of property that's sold in South Moro Hills, one sold for $400,000, another one sold for $350,000. And those land preserves usually offer between $5,000 to $10,000 an acre. So what person that owns two and a half acres in South Moro Hills or any large parcel of land would want to sell it for, I don't know how much the percentage is, but it sounds like close to, what, 5%, 10% of their land value to put their land into preserve and then continue to farm it and pay the cost. I don't know if it would ever pencil out, but I think we should still look into it. I have personally looked into it myself, it didn't work. A couple other neighbors did look into that, didn't work. So, but there's always something new. So you always got to keep pursuing, and I really appreciate you putting together that workshop, and I hope people will go and look and listen to that and see if there are ways we can preserve agriculture. So I'm all for preserving agriculture if it works for the farmer, because that's how we have agriculture, is a farmer. If we don't preserve our farmer, we won't have any farmland or any kind of agriculture. So that's kind of my, I've been saying this for as long as I've been working on this, probably about 14 years now. So it's always been about trying to figure out a way to keep the farmers out there farming. They all, that I know farmers, they all want to farm, they don't want to sell their land for houses, but they have to remain profitable because they have workers and they have families to support. So I'm all for preserving farmland. From day one, I've always been that way, but it's hard.
Good comments. Thank you, Louise. And thank you, Russ, for pulling all this together, and thank you for that meeting on the, coming up on the 13th. And thank all the speakers and those that provided emails to this process. I think it was a good dialogue tonight, lots of good information and ideas, and I think some thoughts going forward in terms of what we want to do or consider or reanalyze. So that being said, we've been asked, as a body here, to provide the city council with a recommendation on the preferred alternative, either A or B. So I don't see anybody on my little monitor here asking or referencing that they'd like to speak to anything else. So do we want to, any other commentary, offer a motion? Louise, thank you for teeing up. I'll let you run with it.
I would definitely like to support the staff's recommendation for Alternate B, but I would like to add on that they look into the study of hopefully making North River Road and trying to look at other ideas besides making that a four-lane road, because we're just going to get more, you know, more traffic. So if there's a way to add that on to the recommendation to council, to say like, we look into that a little bit more with traffic and engineering, see if there's other ways that they can look into it, certainly with a bike trail, because that's, that's what we've always wanted. So I mean, but just the idea of going four lanes is kind of harsh, just because it's just another 76.
Yeah.
And that doesn't really, that doesn't do anything for agritourism, you know, another 76, so. But I would make a motion to recommend to council for Alternate B.
Okay, so we have a motion, Alternative B, going forward with the caveat of doing some additional analysis or ideas for North River Road. Before I ask for a second, does anybody want to modify that or add anything to that or help out Louise with her motion? Are we happy with the dialogue and kind of the other things going forward? Tom, it looks like you want to make a second.
No, I was just going to, I like that motion, I'd like to second Louise's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Balma and a second by Vice Chair Morrissey to move forward with Alternative B, again with a caveat or addition for other ideas for North River Road. No further dialogue, then I think we're ready for a vote.
Chairman Rosales, let the record show that the motion passes 6-0 in support of Alternative B, making a recommendation to city council on Alternative B of the general plan alternatives.
Thank you, city planner. Again, thank you, Russ, and thank everybody who provided input, both here in the chambers or via email. Okay, we'll go then to the last item on the agenda, and that is city planner and commissioner reports. I really don't have anything to add to or offer as a report for this evening. Vice Chair Morrissey?
I just wanted to ask, where did we stand on, a few meetings ago, we talked about a concerned citizen that had a pepper tree cut down, and I don't know that I've seen anything, any response to that, so I think at this point, just looking for who in the city, whose jurisdiction is that under? Do we have response to that email that was put together?
Sure. Vice Chair Morrissey, so that, we have, we did look into that issue. So it's interesting that that area is covered, but what's known as a lighting and maintenance district, so the city doesn't own the property, but they manage a contract for the maintenance of that property. And so the person in Public Works and the Property Management Division has reached out directly to that homeowner who started the inquiry, so there's been direct correspondence with that person.
Is that Public Works person?
I don't have the name in front of it, I think it's Jori Liyan, Jori Liyan, so J-O-R-I-E-L-I-A-N.
Perfect. Can you, Louise, please have that made perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
No, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Balma?
Tomorrow, tomorrow at the Brooks Theater at 2:30, there's going to be a tourism summit for Oceanside, so I'm not sure if any of you signed up for that, but it is going to be, I'm sure it's going to be well-attended, it always is, but it's kind of a way to kind of focus on all the great stuff that Oceanside is doing in the tourism sector, which we are doing pretty good, especially with our, now the Top Gun House, which has gotten a lot of play. So we're really kind, and then, I don't know if you guys have had any of the donuts, don't know, it's apple pie, which is like, who has gone to McDonald's? Remember back in the day McDonald's had those apple pies? They kind of spun off of the apple pie theme with that, so if you haven't had it, you got to try that. Anyway, that's Tourism Summit tomorrow at 2:30, Brooks.
Thank you. Commissioner Custer?
No.
Commissioner Dodd's?
No report.
And Commissioner Simons?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, everyone. So city planner, wrap it up for us, if you're online.
Yes, thanks, Chairman Rosales. So just a reminder of a couple upcoming items. At your meeting on June 13th, you'll be considering a mixed-use project at 802 South Pacific. It's at the corner of Wisconsin and South Pacific Street, it's vacant lot currently. It's a mixed-use project they're proposing there. Also be considering the Tri-City Psychiatric Facility and potentially the Ocean Camp Project. There's still a couple moving parts that we're not certain that will be resolved by the 13th. We have advertised it as being on the public hearing, as a public hearing for that date, but it may be, there may be the need to continue that to the next meeting after that. Moving out to the meeting of June 27th, we tentatively scheduled a project known as Tierra Norte. It's a land, a general plan amendment, zone amendment, no development proposed at this time, on 25 acres located on the south side of North River Road, in between Douglas to the east, it's east of Douglas and west of College. And so that project's been around for a long time, since 2013, and so we're finally bringing it forward. And finally, moving on to city council, on June 22nd, we have the two appeals of the Cypress Point and the Whaley Street residential projects that this body heard back in March, and the general plan alternatives will also be on that city council agenda. That concludes my report. Thanks.
Okay, that's our last item, so we are adjourned until June 13th. Thank you, everyone.